Get us back into an open meeting and help us certify the closed meeting.
So move, move to reconvene, open meeting.
Thank you.
Whereas Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City of, that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Mr. Ankuma, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Carney, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Sharp, Ms. Ward, and Mr. Webb.
All right. Thanks very much. Next time on the dinner. Please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Good evening. My name's Allison Kuchma, and I just want to continue the information flow about in the land of what it's like to be a special ed parent, so I would thought I would share my most recent, one of my most recent experiences. I went to the Special Education Subcommittee meeting on parent engagement, and it was a Subcommittee meeting, and the meeting started, the chairman started the meeting, and there was a part in the meeting where there was going to be public comment, and the chairman got going with the first two items explaining what those were items were, and the meeting was interrupted by the chairman of the school board standing up and saying, you know, I need to interject and explain about public comment, and while public comment is very welcome, and there's other ways you can comment, by fax or email, and this is the work of the Subcommittee, and tonight, the work is for work of the Subcommittee, and this work is then reported out to the full committee, and went on about basically trying to make the people there that were there for public comment not feel at all welcome. And there weren't a big, it wasn't a big crowd, it was me and one other parent. So I felt very bullied by this interruption to the meeting, and then the chairman said that she, you know, had the meeting under control and the meeting continued, and then she got to the public comment time, and then Kim Cherry spoke, when it was supposed to be public comment, Kim Cherry, a staff member, spoke and said, again, what the chairman had said, all about public comment, which we've gone over before, and how members of the committee are not supposed to respond to public comment. So there was much discussion about that. Then public comment began, and a parent, Bill Royce, spoke about the role of the Subcommittee and what's in law, and it was very interesting, obviously, so interesting that the chairman interrupted and commented about the public comment, and I found that kind of interesting because we're all about the rules, except when we want to not follow the rules, when it's convenient for you to not follow the rules, you don't follow the rules. But if it's important, like, I'm sure you're going to ask me to stop speaking when my three minutes is up, because the rules are important when you're hearing from people that aren't telling you what you want to hear. And so I went to the SPIAC meeting last night, and, you know, the chairs, the parents, there's the, the committee is there, and the chairs are over in the corner, and, and the, the role of the SPIAC committee is to get parents engaged. I mean, you all work to get information about the community so you can make our schools serve our kids better, and there's something going on, and I don't appreciate being, going to a public meeting and being treated like that. Then the director of special ed tells us that the building locks at eight o'clock, and that we have to leave. My three minutes is up. The building doesn't lock at eight o'clock, but we were being told we had to leave, and this, and this person said this in front of her supervisor, and I'm sure her supervisor, which is Tony Jones, knows that the building doesn't lock at eight o'clock. We were made to feel not welcome, and I have a problem with that. I just wanted to share that with you, because I'm not sure you would hear it from anyone else. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to the official start of the budget season. Tonight, you will hear from the chair of each of the advisory committees, professional staff, support staff, and administrative staff. Each of those groups will share their recommendations for the upcoming budget. As the professional experts for each subs group, they have thoughtfully compiled a list of things that are important for their stakeholders. FCCEA supports each of those recommendations and reiterates the need for salary improvements, a step increase, and the benefits to remain at current levels. FCCA would also like to take the opportunity to make you aware of a few challenges that our members are still facing despite the improvements in the past year. One, many members did not see an increase in their take-home pay last year, and some even saw decreases due to the increase in the VRS requirement contributions. The school board did its best to phase in that change, but the adjustments in salary did not cover the increase in contributions for all staff. Two, members experienced an increase in daycare costs this year due to the changes in start timings at all buildings. The school board and community supported the change because it is what's best for students, and members understand that. Yet, the unintended consequence is that staffs now spend the salary increase on before and/or after school care for their children. And three, our members are working above and well beyond the standard professional contract. As professionals, they do everything that is required, and often much more, to make their classrooms the best possible. They are maxed out to their capacity to do more with less. The increased days and requirements have not been offset by the salary improvements that have been afforded. As you consider the items that you will hear tonight, please remember that FCCPS has the wonderful school system it does because of the hard work of the amazing professionals that you will hear from this evening in their respective buildings. They need to be compensated for the amazing work they do every day. Thank you.
This is just public comments by FCCS.
Want to be sure?
Yep.
All right. Here it is. Thank you. The next item on the seat recommendations.
The SEEK recommendations for next fiscal school year is SEEK recommends a salary improvement for all employees, including but not limited to the full salary, full step on the salary scale. SEEK would like to thank the superintendent and school boards for their continued commitment to support employees. SEEK remains committed to ensuring the compensation, both salaries and benefits, continue to increase for everyone. A step increase is important to many employees as well as ways to increase salaries, acknowledge the variables of contributions of all staffs, and, and advance careers. SEEK requests both a step and COLA increase for all employees. Each individual employee contributes to the success of each student's national record and our school system. Support employees are working harder than ever to sustain the support needed to maintain this level of excellence. SEEK is asking that the superintendent and school board recognize these contributions by providing substantial ongoing salary improvements for all employees. SEEK requests that employees working 35 hours a week are offered health benefits at the same as 75 premiums at those who are working 40 hours a week. This would make health benefits accessible for more support employees, particularly paraprofessionals who are hired at 35 hours a week. Three, SEEK requests that the superintendent and school board continue to provide the appropriate number of support professional staff to manage to increase the student population of all schools. As students' population, square footage of all schools continue to increase, it's imperative to maintain small class sizes to ensure that the adequate support staff to meet the demands and associate with all the increases. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have our input for this budget process. SEEK acknowledged PEAK and EAK and fully support their recommendations as well.
The Professional Employee Advisory Committee would like to present the following recommendations regarding salaries and benefits for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. PEAK recommends you continue your salary improvement plan for our professional employees, including but not limited to a full step on the salary scale and adjusting the salary scale to make us more competitive with Arlington, as was established in the school board's four-year plan. PEAK has worked with the school board and city council over the last few years to help maintain a strong school system while ensuring the financial stability of both the schools and the city. We are grateful for the step increases that have been afforded. However, many of our employees still need to work additional jobs to support their families. An adjustment in the salary scales would go a long way to help that situation. Additionally, there are a number of staff members who have reached the top of their scale and will not benefit from a salary increase. A salary scale adjustment is needed for them to receive any increase in compensation. PEAK would like to thank the superintendent and school board for their continued efforts to be competitive with surrounding districts with adjustments to portions of the salary scale. PEAK recognizes this practice helps Falls Church City Public Schools to recruit and retain the best and most qualified teachers. Secondly, PEAK recommends that when facing difficult budget decisions, the school board and the superintendent continue to ensure small class sizes and enough personnel to continue our excellent education programming. As the board is fully aware, our student enrollment is at historical high. PEAK recognizes the efforts to limit the number of students in each class and reduce the size of larger classes once the school year has begun. PEAK encourages and supports the superintendent and school board to provide the FTEs needed to support reduced class sizes. Additionally, as we grow, as we continue to grow and bring in new programs, PEAK would like the school board and superintendent to consider the equity of professional staff at each building. A larger student population requires adequate administrative counseling and specialist staff at each building. Finally, PEAK recommends that no further benefit reduction take place, and benefit increases take place specifically in areas of professional development. Examples include, but are not limited to, the contribution towards employee health insurance, including that of retirees, should not involve further reduction in coverage/ co-pays to members. The contribution for long-term disability insurance should continue. The contribution for the employee's assistance plan should continue. Professionals being sponsored to attend professional conferences should be reinstated. Tuition waivers should be adjusted to reflect increased tuition and the increased demand. PEAK is committed to ensuring the professional staff budget recommendations are heard and understood. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to have input in the budget process. As always, PEAK also recognizes that SEEK and EAK know what's best for their members and fully endorse their recommendations. Thank you.
The Administrative Educators Advisory Committee would like to present the following recommendations. The committee recommends a salary improvement for employees to include a full step on the salary scale, and a COLA representative of the increase in the Consumer Price Index. One of the goals of FCCPS is to recruit and retain the most qualified staff. These salary improvements are critical for this goal. These additional monies will keep FCCPS competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. The committee also recommends that the 1% to 3% match to our 403B retirement plan be reinstated. This match was removed from the budget cycle three years ago, and discussed again during the 2011 cycle. We urge reinstatement to enhance benefits for employees. Lastly, we recommend the reinstatement of tuition waivers. Tuition waivers provide an opportunity for staff to continue and expand their knowledge. These waivers may also be utilized to support critical needs within the division. We also fully support the recommendations made by the SEEK and both the PEAK committees. Thank you.
Congratulations. Our budget process, which will inform all of the to us. All right. Next is a consentation, a motion for house consentation. All there? Our votes. Our very good. Next, moving on to our business. How many point of one update?
Good evening. Yes, that's me. Tonight, I've asked some staff from our elementary schools to come and update the school board on materials that you approved last year for our reading component of our K-5 literacy program. These materials have proven to be very beneficial to our teachers as well as our reading instructional program. As we've grown in the last few years from six to nine teachers on each grade level, we found that we needed more consistent materials in order to have a cohesive instructional program. We found these benchmark materials are a great resource for our teachers, both for our, it has empowered our experienced teachers and also gave guidance to our novice teachers. It's also allowed for us to have more consistency among classrooms and among grade levels for greater both horizontal and vertical alignment. Benchmark literacy supports all the daily components of a high-quality reading instructional program, and the emphasis is on comprehension, which we find that on SOL tests as well as students' needs as they continue to grow and proceed through their educational career they need. I will now turn it over to Joe Ernst, who is our TJ reading specialist and 2 through 5 CERT, Heather Van Gorder, first grade teacher, and K-1 CERT, and Patty Smith, our second grade teacher. Ladies, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come in and share a little bit about the implementation of benchmark literacy in grades K through 5. As Lisa said, as we grew, grow as a division, one of the things that we wanted to, to really look carefully at was that consistency of instruction across K to 5, and especially as we're split between two buildings. So benchmark literacy was really a way to, to do that. It's a program that really meets the needs of all of our learners, and it focuses on whole group instruction, then small group instruction, and independent practice and application. And the whole group instruction is really spiraled and scaffolded, meaning the skills that are brought up within each grade level, students are coming back to throughout the school year, and the comprehension strategies that are introduced in kindergarten continue to spiral throughout first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, albeit at more sophisticated and challenging levels. So we've really got that consistency within grade levels and then across grade levels. The small group instruction, one of the components of benchmark literacy that we found to be the most appealing was that it came with a variety of level text. So within each grade level, there are 10 units. Within each unit, there are seven to 10 titles of level text that span the range of readers that we have in any given classroom, and so every single classroom teacher was provided with anywhere from 70 to 100 titles of level text that they can use for small group instruction. And those texts represent a variety of genres, so you've got nonfiction, biography, science and social studies connections, realistic fiction, traditional tales, which you'll see in a short clip of a second grade classroom. And then we also, there's also the independent practice and application component, so students are taking what they're learning from the whole group instruction, the small group instruction, then applying that into the reading that they're doing every day, both at school and at home.
And for kindergarten through second grade, week one is explicit modeling of a metacognitive skill or strategy, for example, analyzing characters or finding the very important part, making predictions. Teachers, we use short passages and posters that are interactive whiteboards, and the illustrations are very lively and colorful, and the kids seem to really respond to those. Students work in small groups applying these strategies, so we work in a, work together, and then they go off and work on it individually or in small groups. Week two is, gives them opportunities for guided practice of strategies in a variety of texts, and then students work in small groups, again, to build comprehension skills. And then week three, the strategies are strengthened through reader's theater rehearsal and performance, which is obviously a lot of fun for our little ones, and so I do, I personally love it for the metacognitive part of it, and getting the students to think about their thinking and just digging deeper in those higher-level skills and comprehension skills, so.
And I guess to piggyback on that, the way that it's organized, like as Lisa said and Heather, each, there's 10 units, each unit is focused on a comprehension strategy and a metacognitive strategy, so really the focus is on building students' critical thinking within text.
And these are some examples, as I was saying, the colorful, you know, little posters, the cat troubles is trying to find the very important part, or, I think it was a very important part, or you could even find what, character analysis, how the, the characters are feeling, as well as the one with the cow and, and stuff like that. And they're, they're great because they're whiteboard, so the kids can come up and find the, the main idea, or how the character's feeling, and circle those clues in the texts, and then we can write it on the bottom. And these are just some examples of the guided reading books we have. Like Jill said, there's tons of different ones to choose from, nonfiction, fiction, realistic fiction, so, yeah.
I have the pleasure of teaching second grade, and they're a wonderful group of kids. One of the things I did was, when Jill asked me to do this, I said, well, I don't, I'm not really big on speaking in front of people, but, you know, certainly if you want to come in and video the kids, I think that would speak for itself, so we have a short video. It started out like 35 minutes, but we had to break it down to about five, but I also brought some of their reading journals, and what I do as a teacher is, this is my class, and I'm giving a whole group instruction using the SMARTboard right now, but from there, we meet, we talk, and then I send them off, and while I'm working with guided reading, small group instruction, the kids go off and they go into their own work on, in their reading journals, along with word study and other components to the second grade curriculum, so I asked my second graders if I could borrow a couple of their books tonight, and they said yes, as long as I brought them back tomorrow.
One spider has small legs. By Carol P. Leann Martin. Illustrated by Anita Tafala. Once there was a spider named Anansi. He had a big round belly. Thank you.
What good figures do when you're trying to understand the book? Okay. Excellent. Why do you like? And what 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 do you like?
..............................................................................................................................
What I love about this program is the double whammy, I call it. I give them, you know, a whole group instruction for twenty minutes, and then, when we go back to guided reading, I'm able to, again, in their leveled readers...
Hi, I'm Dan Joseph with MRCG.
Sorry, sorry.
Go back and, you know, repeat exactly what they had just learned, but at their level. And, you know, it's amazing what they've picked up in just a short amount of time.
Um, let's try this, see if that works. Okay. So, you saw a little bit of the whole group instruction and some of the interactive materials with the, the big books, the Anansi, why spiders have small waists. And then, this is an example of the whole group resources that we use for third through fifth grade. So, K2, their whole group instruction, they use big books and e-posters. And then, 3-5, they use, they're using more e-posters. So, this is an example of an interactive poster for our third grade unit, the second unit. And so, they were talking about biographies. And so, this is just one of the resources that teachers will access when teaching a whole group lesson. And here's some examples of the leveled text for the upper grades, for third through fifth. And as you can see, there's a variety of genres. We've got historical, we've got nonfiction, there's historical fiction within there, we've got myths, fables, traditional tales, and then, your fiction. One thing I will say about Benchmark Literacy is that the majority of the texts are nonfiction, and so, our kids, I think, are really being exposed to a variety of nonfiction texts that maybe they wouldn't have previously had access to. One of the things, which I'm sure is a surprise to no one, is that the professional development component is such a critical piece. In August, we were fortunate to have two staff developers from Benchmark Literacy come and give an overview to all of our instructional staff, so faculty, support staff, specialists. They were able to come back in November, and at that time, they worked and did demo lessons with small groups of our students at each grade level. And so, we were able to plan with a Benchmark Literacy consultants. They delivered lessons, and then we had time to debrief and consult with them. And I think the teachers found that to be a really valuable use of time to see, you know, just kind of an expert who's very familiar with these materials, using them with, with our students.
Yeah. And then, at Mount Daniel, we do a Dr. Jan Richardson book study. So, once a month, we meet Kay and First, and we kind of just dive into her chapters, and we collaborate and explore new ways to understand more effective teaching methods. And, you know, we only get to see Jan once, once a year, and she's fabulous. And I've seen her numerous times, and, and you still learn more every time she comes. So, this is actually a great way to just stay on top of it and keep up with all the things that we've learned and try maybe new things that we haven't done, and then come back and collaborate and talk about how it went, what we could do better, and share resources and, and different expertise and knowledge with each other. So, it's been fun.
And it's been great also, because second grade has also been invited over to, to see Jan Richardson as well. So, you know, there's, you know, although we're in two different buildings, we really tried to work together and learn together.
So, in addition to that, the staff development from Benchmark Literacy, and then the kind of onsite staff development that Heather's providing, one of the things that I started this year were, was offering mini sessions focused on specific components of, of comprehensive literacy. And teachers can decide, they're usually held before school or over lunch, and teachers can decide, you know, what, what mini sessions are relevant to the work that they're doing with students, and they can come in, and we've got cross-grade level conversations. And then, I'm also able to do demonstration lessons in classrooms, so similar to kind of what the Benchmark consultants did, but at the school level, so in between those PD sessions. And then, teachers are also going and doing peer observations of one another, which I think is really helpful. And these were just, we asked for feedback from teachers, so this, this was just some of the feedback that the teachers provided. I think that the common theme was having a consistent structure and consistent expectations and consistent materials. And I think that as we go from one year to the next, we're gonna, we'll see even more so how important that consistency of instructional approach is. Feedback, wealth of nonfiction, leveled text, structure of the strategies, having, you know, guided reading text. Texts that are targeted to specific reading skills, I think with all learners in mind. Texts that support readers that need additional support, and texts that extend readers that are, that are ready to, you know, take off. And that there's focus skill for each week.
That's it.
I have to say, a big thank you to Heather and Mrs. Smith and her class, and Diane Zhang. She, our tech specialist, she was the one that came in and shot that video and edited it for us. She put in a lot of work, so she didn't, she didn't want her name on there, but I would be remiss if I did not thank her, so, yes. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Just, just before you have a question. And I just want to stress that with Benchmark Literacy, there are lots of interactive components, where the interactive whiteboards, the books that you saw, we did screenshots just because we were a little nervous, because we're not in the schools, to show this, but the, all of the videos are interactive, all of the books are in e-books, so that the students have the opportunity to read them, whether on their screen or an iPad. And we do have an at-home component that we're going to roll out very shortly. We just want to make sure that all the glitches have been taken care of in, in school. So, we work really closely with the Benchmark Technology Department as well to make sure that everything's working the way that it's supposed to, so that when they take it home, it'll work for them and that the students won't get frustrated. But, we're very, very pleased with what you approved for us last year, and we just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Are there comments? We'll start down here and see if questions or comments. Mr. Sharp?
What would you say, is the average class size where you're...
I've got twenty-one, oh, twenty right now. I just lost a student who went overseas, so. And I would say that's average in second grade, twenty-one, twenty, I have twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-two.
I would say for the upper grades, I think that that's twenty-two, twenty-three.
I was just wondering, I didn't get to go through Tom Jefferson or Mount Daniel, the superintendent, organize a tour for our board members.
They're looking for you.
High school. Thank you for the video tonight. I also see a video from that.
They're great chats.
And I did have a chance to hear the teacher here, board association, best of two students. And she was a great teacher, perfect student. And she had quite a good perspective, a terrific speaker. I think her main point was that she tries to be whole child, her family situation, she has children's homes. I think in some extent, you also comprehend the different levels of literature, which I think also requires a good whole child.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to make that up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Yeah. Anybody else on this end have questions or comments?
Just real quick, just say thank you all for coming and sharing us what's going on in the classroom with this special project. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting it.
Just one quick question. Everything seems to be divided, K2, 3-5. Is the fact that second grade's gonna move back to Mount Daniel gonna make things easier for you, so you don't have to worry about different buildings when you have somebody come visit?
I don't think so. I feel like it'll be easier.
I have some loyalty to TJ, so it's gonna be hard for me. I mean, we've had there seven years, but, yeah.
It'll be easier to collaborate with second.
I think it will be easier to collaborate, and I think that, you know, will benefit children in the end.
And I think even, even after that move, one of the things, especially with the adoption of Benchmark Literacy, and we've got a language arts task force that we're trying to do, is still bridge that, you know, the, right now, K1, 2-5, and eventually, K2, 3-5, but really have a K5, you know, and continue our K5 consistency, even though we're split between two buildings. So, there's a challenge there, logistically, but... Thanks. Anybody on this end have a question or thought?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Whoa, 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 lots of asks.
Got, got two questions. The first is, I, I would assume from a copyright perspective, fiction is harder to integrate into this. It seems to be there's a, an emphasis on nonfiction. Is, do you feel the balance is right on fiction versus nonfiction? And, and my other question is, what I've seen is that, especially when it comes to reading, not everybody learns at the same speed. Does this system help accommodate those differences in learning? And when, when do you see things sort of come out in the wash and everybody start having more consistency across, you know, when do the people who, that, you know, the Einsteins who are a little slow with their reading, when, when do they start to pick up speed?
Sure. So, to, to respond to your first question, the, the nonfiction fiction balance, I think that prior to adopting Benchmark Literacy, the large majority of the texts that we were using during language arts was, was fiction.
Agreed.
Agreed. So, you know, at the upper grades, the novels that they were using were primarily fiction, historical fiction certainly within fourth grade. So, I think that bringing in Benchmark Literacy has kind of tempered that and balanced that. You know, I think we're, as a school, always looking to maintain that balance. So, you know, as we go forward and reflect on Benchmark Literacy, that's a question that I would have moving forward, is do we feel that we have, we've achieved that balance, or are there any other texts?
I think too, the posters are, you know, fiction. So, you know, they have their whole group read, it's typically a fiction, not always, but, you know, it's typically fiction. But I will say, the second graders have just eaten up the books that are nonfiction, and they just can't get enough of that. And I think for my class, you know, again, all classes are different, but, you know, they, they really have, you know, just have this magnetism for them. And, you know, every time I pull a new book out, they're just very excited. You know, one of the books that was mentioned was about Jane Goodall, and, you know, they, they went to the library the next time, and they were like, "Do you have any books about her?" You know, that small group that I was with. So, you know, I think it also pulls interest out as well. You know, you saw, I think it was Albert Einstein up there from the upper grades, but, you know, we, we tackle, you know, famous scientists as well, and, and I think that's a nice balance to have, you know, in, in a second grade classroom. And I think one of the things that we'll see as, as time goes on is that we're gonna have stronger readers, because they're, you know, they're being introduced to skills so early, you know, from kindergarten on, that by the time they do come to me in second grade, they're gonna know a lot of things that, you know, were introduced early on. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll build on that.
Great. Thank you. Your second question, about, so you were asking, you know, does this program, is it responsive to different readers? Am I right? And to the different readers that we have in each classroom?
Well, and also, you know, given my understanding that everybody doesn't all read on the second grade level in second grade, how, you know, again, I guess Einstein is a good example. He was a slow starter, and he finished pretty well. So, so how far along on the spectrum does, does the advancement through fifth grade go? And does this appear to help in any way that you can tell? I know it's early, but...
I, I guess I can just speak for my class. I mean, I have a variety of leveled books, and I have children in all different levels. So, when I meet with them in a guided reading group, I'm pulling kids that are at the same level, but it's a small group lesson I'm giving. So, I have a multiple, multiple books that I'm using in a week to address their needs. And, you know, I think in the video, you saw me taking notes as they were reading. You know, I'm documenting some things that I'm either hearing or that they need to work on, and, you know, that's my way of, you know, again, knowing how to address their needs.
And I think in, with the leveled text that I talked about, the range, range of levels, so, one of the, when we were looking at adopting curriculums, most, or some of the other basal curriculums, you've got leveled text, but you've got one below grade level text, one at grade level text, and one above grade level text. And we just, we know that within any given classroom, we're gonna have a wider range than that. And within Benchmark Literacy, so the, the actual kind of paper copies of text, we've got texts that span, you know, to half a year below grade level to, you know, the end of grade level, and then, within some grade levels, it's even extending into the next kind of grade level band. The feedback we've gotten from teachers is that the texts are pretty challenging, so even though it might be considered a grade level text, our readers that are ready to be extended, the books are providing enough of a challenge for them. And then, as Lisa talked about, the e-readers, so while each teacher has seventy to a hundred titles, the e-readers allow us access to all of the benchmark published books. So, that's well beyond what each teacher would have in their, in their kind of classroom set, and even what we would have at TJ and Mount Daniel. So, there's, I'm not sure exactly how many texts or titles, but, and those would span the entire, from, you know, beginning kindergarten level all the way up to beyond fifth, sixth grade. So, we've got the text to, to match to readers. That answer your question? All right. Thank you very much, ladies. We sure appreciate your good work and you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is approval of a series of updates to bylaws, so I will ask Mr. Horn to approach. Yeah?
Good evening. A month ago, we brought nine policies with no suggested revisions, just the opportunity to stamp it with a review and update the date. At the request of the board, we did make one change, so 2.13 was revised after first reading, and you'll see that one-line edition there. Otherwise, we're presenting nine policies relatively unchanged for second reading tonight. I'll take any questions you might have developed over the last month.
All right. Does anyone have questions about these? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? No? All right. Very good. Thanks so much, Mr. Horn. We look forward to the next batch. The next item is a special education grant award. Dr. Jones, I'll turn this over to you.
And this is really just to let you know that Liz Germer and her staff worked incredibly hard on putting this grant forward to the Virginia Department of Education right before school started, and Lisa's staff as well. Sorry, I need to acknowledge that. Team effort, I'm sorry. And we were absolutely delighted to find out that they did, they were one of the grant recipients, and it is forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, and it is going for PBIS, which is a behavior management system. And very, very exciting, because it's some work that I would say was very ground level for us, and especially with the two behavior positions that we put in over the last two years. And so, this is really gonna help us build on that, and we're very excited. It's hard for us to get, to be grant recipients for a lot of these with the videoe, simply because a lot of them do look at your free and reduce ratio, and we get knocked out sometimes before we can even put the application in. So, this was just an open grant process. The team did a fabulous job presenting, and they did it rather quickly, just pulling everybody together. So, congratulations to, and Lisa, do you want to...
And we're just really excited that this will also fit in with our RTI, Response to Intervention. We focused on the academic components for the last couple of years when we've had a consultant come in, and now, this will allow us to focus on some of the behavior and put some behavior systems in place for, support for students as well. So, we're really gonna tie that all together, and, and have already made contact with someone to come and help us do that, that's been working with us on RTI. So, we're, we're ready to move forward, spend that money.
That's great, and I can assume that Ms. Germer will bring the Special Advisor Committee up to date on this at their next meeting and help them understand what it is and how the money will be used and the kind of results we're getting. I'm sure they'll be very excited to hear about this, so that's terrific. Next is the draft legislative package. Ms. Ward, is that, you've been the spearhead on this. Shall I turn it over to you?
Thank you, yes. Well, you all should have been able to look at the legislative positions that Lila and Tony drafted. This is a draft copy. I can run through it briefly, if you would all like that. I can run through it briefly if you would all like that. Would that help? Okay. So, again, this is a draft copy of our school board's legislative positions for 2015. Basically, it is going through the accountability, which is the A through F grading system that most, if not all, schools oppose, as it is very one-dimensional. Our position is that we would ask for a better, better assessment tool than the one that is currently being proposed. The next is accreditation. And, you okay? Good, okay. I wasn't sure for you. Accreditation on flexibility in how often our schools are accredited, as well as IDing all alternative ways for our students to accrue credits outside of the traditional classroom. Assessment is just, it goes back to the SOLs. As most of you know, the SOLs are very, again, another one-dimensional snapshot of how our students are doing. This particular proposal would allow us to supplement the SOLs with other assessments that give a better snapshot of how our students are doing. Funding, that's a big one. It basically is asking for additional funding for the cost of competing, as well as funding for ELL teachers and providing the local school districts with flexibility in how they use state funding. The next is mandates. What Falls Church City would like to see is there be a panel of experts that would review the state's mandates, as most of these mandates are generated by non-educators. So, what Falls Church City would like to see is someone be on a panel to actually review those mandates before they go into effect. Then the last is virtual education. Falls Church would support legis, ah, supports legislation that would support technology integration. And it opposes measures that would require transfer of local taxpayer funds to other jurisdictions or private providers, should a student choose to attend a program, a virtual program, outside of the homeschool division. One thing we would like to add to this, that we didn't, it wasn't included initially, is the local control of the school calendar. We would like to add that as another of our positions, so that individual school districts can control with the start date of schools, as well as the end date and vacation time. And with that, if any of you have any questions that I might be able to clarify, or if you have anything you'd like to see added, please let me know. And we'll get this back to Lila, so she can do her final draft.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ward. I appreciate the time and effort you've put into this particular role for the board. You'll notice that this is for discussion tonight, not adoption. So, if you have questions or concerns or issues, feel free to ask them of Ms. Ward tonight, or if not, to send them to her via email or phone call or any other method. And this will come back to the board for approval in a final format at our January, I would think our January meeting, just before the general assembly session starts, I think on the 15th of January. So, any questions or feedback for her at this moment? Yes?
I just had one question. Do we weight all of these considerations equally? Do we have any, are they presented in any order of weighting or priority?
I think everything that's in this package is a priority. We, VSBA sends us their legislative priorities, which are more comprehensive than what we have here. What we do is we pick and choose what we feel is important to Falls Church City, and then our legislative representative will have this in her hands should a vote come up, or if there's a conversation about any of these. So, she can focus on what's really important to us. Does that answer your question?
Anything else?
Just insert city in the rest of the body of the issues, that's it.
Okay. Good point, Mr. Lawrence.
Just two questions. One is, speaking of VSBA, will we adopt any sort of resolution of support for their proposals as a member of VSBA? Or do we just?
That's next.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if that was the next item, or it was more broadly with their legislative package.
That's separate from the legislative package.
Okay. So, the next thing we're going to do is specifically the VSBA legislative package?
No, not necessarily the package, because some of those priorities listed in VSBA aren't really germane to what Falls Church City's doing. They're available if you wanted to look at them, but I didn't feel it was worth going through all of them, because they're not...
Okay.
We picked up from VSBA what we thought was important for our school district and put it in our package. But it's there. If you want, if you had any questions on that, I could hopefully answer them.
Okay.
If not, I wasn't going to cover that.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine. I just couldn't remember how we'd done it in the past. And speaking of the past, have we, didn't we generally oppose SOLs in the past and say they can be made better, but we don't like them much at all?
Well...
I don't think, I don't recall that being our legislative package.
Okay.
Last year, we had in our package, we wanted fewer of them and revamps of them and a lot of other things.
Okay.
I don't ever remember that previously being in our official legislative package.
And I think the general trend, and not just with our school district, but is that schools want to see less focus on these SOLs and less of them, because, for many reasons, but they do cause a lot of disruption in the school year. They're often, you know, held in May, when the school year's not over till June, so teachers are scrambling to teach the material, teach the content, so kids can be ready for the SOLs. And also, they just, there's such a flat assessment of students. And, you know, our position is not that we're discounting them wholesalely, it's just that we're putting them, we're prioritizing them differently, and hoping to add other assessments that do show what the kids can do, not just this, you know, standardized test. Does that make sense? Okay.
Great.
Any other questions?
Looks like we're good on that one.
Great. Okay. So, next is the resolution. This is a resolution concerning the funding of public education in Virginia. And I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it. I will just cover some of the more salient points on this. This was sent to us from VSBA. Basically, it is requesting an increase in K through 12 state funding of schools, or at the very least, not allowing those funds to decline. Getting back to, Karen mentioned the recession of 2009. It had an effect, not just locally, obviously, but it fact, affected our whole, our whole state and all the schools in it. Since 2009, Virginia's state aid to public education has been declining. We are, right now, schools are, they are funding 50%, 56% of the state versus local share. When that is, according to the SOQ on that, the locals should only be paying 45%. So, it's significantly above what the SOQs define. So, basically, in a nutshell, this resolution is asking the general assembly to, let's get back to that 45% and let's stop taking money away from our schools.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. Because I'm going to channel our vice mayor for a moment here, I just want to point out to folks that when they say that localities are currently paying 56% of the share and should be paying 45, in Falls Church, we pay 80% plus of our schools, nowhere near that amount. So, the other thing I just want to point out here, just because this is a bone that I have to pick, is when we adopted lotteries here in the state, the use of those funds was to support education. And what's happened over time is that they've been used to supplant general fund revenues to schools, rather than enhance and supplement them. And it's just, I won't say it's a crime, but it's a shame, for sure. So, are there any questions? This is on the agenda tonight for discussion and perhaps adoption of support of this resolution? Any questions or concerns? Mr. Castillo, any questions or concerns? Yeah?
I just had a question there. As the chair pointed out, there are some local differences. It also mentions depressed real estate values. I mean, I think there are tensions and problems that vary a little bit. I think they all net out in the same way. But I, so I guess, are we speaking to Virginia holistically in this?
Yes. So, this resolution is in support of all the schools in Virginia. It will, it will be presented, we're hoping to present it to the general assembly. And so, you know, we, clearly, we don't fall into that real estate assessment in here, but the majority of the state does, as far as mileage goes, not necessarily population. So, you know, most of this, the bottom line with this whole resolution is to increase funding for schools. That's it, in a nutshell. These other facts are in there to support that position.
Yeah, and I guess in that vein, I might just suggest a slight, I don't know how you can emphasize this more, but I think if we maybe, I would suggest considering in the first paragraph of the preamble, saying something where the constitution of Virginia requires, and then that's a quote from the constitution of Virginia, which contrary to what some people in this city say, that, you know, okay, schools are, would be sufficient. I mean, the constitution written in there says that they are supposed to be of high quality.
Mm-hmm.
And I think highlighting that in quotes would drive home the fact that the Virginia constitution doesn't say we can have, we should have okay schools. You know, there isn't an affirmative obligation, and that we should remind ourselves of that, as well as the general assembly, of their constitutional obligations, which I'm sure many in the Virginia Assembly pay great deference to constitutions and should therefore act accordingly.
Good point. Excellent point. So...
I'll second that, if that's a motion.
Okay. Is that a motion? So, what I would like to do with this is, I'd like to get it in to, as soon as possible, preferably this month. I don't, we don't have to vote on it tonight if you're not ready, but I prefer that we did. I just would prefer to move this on. The sooner we get it in, the better. And as Tony pointed out to me earlier, the more schools that turn these in, they're added to a list, and other schools who have not yet turned them in will look at that list and say, "Maybe we better do that as well."
Yeah.
So, the sooner we get it in, the better. I, I'm not sure about, we can, can we change any of this?
Yeah. We can do it.
To suit us?
Yeah, we certainly can. And I have another couple of suggestions, but I won't make them till I've looked down this way, to see if there are other questions or concerns at this point. No, no, no. Yeah, I'm going to suggest that we vote on this next Tuesday at our work session. And then the interim period, we make this suggestion that Mr. Castillo had, if we make that change. I'd like to simply remove the real estate values part, because that's not really relevant to us. And I'd like to edit this about the 45 and the 56% to add something that reflects that in Falls Church, we pay 80-plus percent. So, if those edits could be made, and then if we can bring this next Tuesday, that looks to me like we'll be able to sign, approve this and sign it and send it down to folks and, yeah, so...
Susan, did you want me to remove the part that talks about other localities in total, and just include ours? Or just add ours to that?
We just supplement it with ours, so that they understand that in Northern Virginia, it's even worse than that.
Mm-hmm.
It's not even coming close up here.
Good point.
So, great. Thank you so much for both of those things, Ms. Ward. I'll look forward to taking a vote next Tuesday night on that particular thing. The last thing on our business agenda is the construction update. Dr. Jones?
Okay. We do have, obviously, projects going at all of our schools. The one that we are working most closely with right now is Thackeray. And what we're waiting on right now is really for the ground to dry out. We want it to stop raining. The temperatures are cooperating, but we, in the forecast, it does look good. We are still very hopeful that within the next seven days, the parking lot will be poured and we'll be able to do a move by the end of next week. And again, it's all weather-related, so the building itself is ready and looks beautiful. Along with that, we are also, of course, working on Mount Daniel right now. We had an ASAC meeting just recently. We're also working on our summer scheduling. And this will probably be, I say this every year, but I think this is going to be a more challenging summer than we've had the last two summers, simply because we will be vacating half of Mount Daniel and getting all of that moved, as well as means we can't have any summer programs there, so we have to relocate daycare, relocate summer school from Mount Daniel. On top of that, normally, it'd be pretty easy, because you would say you just go to TJ. We're also doing TJ HVAC this summer, which means you have no HVAC for a portion of time. So, we're working on our summer schedules right now very carefully to make sure we don't miss a beat there. And then, just as a reminder, the GM MEH planning steering committee does meet again on Thursday morning at 7:30. And we're working on that project number, I guess it would be number three, right now, that we'll discuss on Thursday.
All right. Very good. Thank you. The next thing is...
Mayor chairman?
Yes?
Can I ask for some information regarding additional, well, it has to do with CIP and with the, and with the, with the GM MEH committee? The CIP, we saw at the joint meeting, a particular scenario for CIP development. And I would suggest that there could be some alternate scenarios. One having to do with fewer non-school projects on the, on the, on the list of things to be done in the next five years. And a second one would have to do with phasing construction of the high school, so that it does not occur just within a single unit at the end of a five-year period, but that it begins sooner. And I'd suggest beginning with the construction of the first phase beginning in 2016, that's calendar 2016. And that there be at least four phases, four segments of the phasing plan. And that we ask for numbers of the estimate of what the costs would be, also in a phased pattern. I think right now, we are asking, we are looking at projections that call for a $350 per square foot cost at the, at the point where we are building the high school. And I'd suggest that we look at what the square foot cost is that we are anticipating for Mount Daniel in this, this time period. And then, yes, have a $350 estimate for the end of the, of the segmenting process. But in the meantime, in the interim, for each of the intervening segments, the three leading up to the final segment, that we have a progression of what the square footage costs would be, beginning with the, the square footage cost estimated based on what we have now at Mount Daniel, but then ramping up to the point where we have the $350 per square foot cost in the final segment.
I'll ask Dr. Jones to look into that. I'm... I'll ask Dr. Jones to, to look into that. From two perspectives. One, I'm, I'm not sure what the general government's policy or process would be for having multiple CIPs as opposed to one. So, just if you would check that procedurally, how that might possibly be done. The second thing is, I'm not, is to think about, given what we know today, how it would be possible to identify what those phases would be and what would, what even the size and scope of each one might be. I'm not sure how to think about that, but maybe our friends in Arcadis can help you think about whether and how that works. Mr. Sharp, I'm absolutely with you, that I, we need to look at a number of different ways to make that high school happen from a construction and a financing perspective. I'm just not sure that we have enough knowledge and are quite ready to do this, to intelligently do this phasing for this CIP. So, Tony, if you would go look at those things and come back to us, that would be helpful.
May I clarify the request?
Yeah.
The request is not to have the School Board recommend multiple CIPs. The request is to have the School Board and anybody else who'd like to review multiple possibilities for the CIP, and then pick the one that they feel is the best, and try to go forward with that one during the next five-year period.
Okay. Okay. So, if you would research, I guess I'm still going to say, I'm not sure how in this year's CIP discussion, we can be intelligent about a phased approach to George Mason, because I'm not sure we have, we haven't done the community visioning part that would help us lock down the program. I'm just not sure how to do that, but I'm going to ask Dr. Jones to talk with Arcadis and see how we might accomplish that. And then, so I guess, next Tuesday night, we can discuss that. And as a board, we can also discuss whether the, I guess, work with Kiran to put together a proposal to bring to the Board for a CIP recommendation that would remove non-school projects, as he's requesting, and then the Board can discuss whether that's something they want to take up or not take up, or, so it sounds like a couple of alternatives for next week? Is that, okay, very good.
The other point has to do with the Committee, the Steering Committee. When the Steering Committee was initially founded, the, the process was, as my understanding, the Steering Committee would identify places where other groups, that is, the School Board, City Council, Planning Commission, would, at points along the way, make some decisions. And meanwhile, the Steering Committee would provide information and set out a sort of calendar steps to follow in the, in the time period that we've so far been in this process. I don't recall that the Steering Committee has asked the School Board to, to make a decision.
I think that...
All I'm asking is that we receive some additional, updated information about when and on what, on what topics, to the extent the Committee can identify them in a reasonably short time period, to say, okay, here are points at which we anticipate, we'd like to have the School Board make a decision, we'd like to have the City Council make a decision, like to have the Planning Commission make a decision, and, you know, give us some roadmap of when, when it is that, that you see the bodies who are, the decision-making bodies are supposed to weigh in here.
Thank you. We'll take that up on Thursday morning. I would say, I think that the time that this Board did make a decision was on the roadmap, was brought both to this Board and to City Council, and a decision made on that roadmap and how it would flow. This Board also made a decision about RTKL coming and helping us with that piece of work. I expect the next decision that we would be asked to weigh in on would be the RFP for our planning partner. That'll be presented, I think, in draft this Thursday morning, and would come back to both bodies at some point for recommending the adoption. But I will begin to the Committee to see if there are things kind of further down the path from that.
I apologize. Memory is the first thing to go at my age. And I would just ask if there is such a roadmap that lays out some of those decisions that, that we receive a copy of what was adopted at that time.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
No problem. Tony, if you'd make sure that gets out to folks, that would be awesome. All right. I think that we are now at the part of our agenda that's called Future Agenda Items. This is a chance for our student representative or anybody on the Board to suggest topics they'd like the Board to take up at a future date that aren't currently on our horizon. And so, I'm just going to pause it for a minute and see if anybody has something that they think they'd like to add to our docket. All right. Seeing none? Oh, 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 yes.
Yes, the Committees that we've been talking about. I would suggest that for getting the STEAM Committee off the ground, that we authorize the Superintendent to bring together the STEAM Committee and to use the current Policy 5.12 to abide its operations and usual directives that we give to a Committee for applying the previous information type of procedures, kind of like, but that we, I understand, we do not have a proposal at this point for the structure of the Committee, that kind of thing. But I would like to authorize us to convene the Committee, to have it begin to, to function and to operate with those, with those rules that are standard in Policy 5.12.
All right. Dr. Jones, do you want to bring us up to date on where that all stands? I know that we, it's in our work plan for this year.
Yeah, it is in our work plan, and we actually have our first meeting next week. And one of the challenges, I think, for us trying to figure out what we'll bring to the Board as far as an approved Committee, is making sure we're very inclusive. We had about forty-seven members of the community that really want to be involved. And so, Lisa's been working on this. It's our first meeting. We'll involve a lot of people. We also have a lot of staff that served on the tech advisory, and they still, now, this is like the next layer of personalized learning under that whole umbrella. And so, we expect it to be a large working group of folks, and then trying to find out who could really make those, you know, the commitment to be there all the time. And we were approaching this probably a little bit more like we did with our tech Committee, where we had a certain Committee that was larger than what we traditionally have had, because it's, we see it as a working Committee instead of one of those that you have every single year for the next ten years. And we may have. But within that Committee, we want to make sure we're very, very inclusive of everybody that wanted to be there. And then, there may be, once we get around the table and we find out really what the expertise is in the room, do we want to have some subcommittees of the STEAM Committee? Because everybody put in their interest in STEAM, and if they work in the field, or maybe they have a tech background, or they're an engineering background, or they work with STEM or STEAM across state or Virginia or across the country. So, once we get everybody in the room, I think we're going to know more about what expertise we have. But we're definitely thinking about doing some subcommittee-type work, because there's so many people. So, it's a little different for us, because we haven't had Committees this size.
So, when do you expect that you might bring something to the Board for approval?
I think after we meet next week, we'll have a much better idea of who are, who are the people that really want to contribute and be, and consistently contribute. Because, you know, with tech, even with the tech Committee, we met a lot. And this Committee's going to meet a lot. So, we need to make sure that if people just want to be an ad hoc member, you know, and come, it's an open meeting. Or do they really want to dig in and do the work? And so, we'll know that, the seventeenth, it's next week.
Okay. So, maybe in your Friday report to us, next Friday, you can give us an update of when we might see that come before us. All right.
Question.
Yes?
Question. Talk about future agenda items. Did we talk, and talk about Committees? Did we have it as part of a, or do we have a plan to review the existing, or this is not the forum for that?
It is. I believe that Mr. Castillo and Mr. Sharp agreed that they would go off and work and bring us back a proposal. And when they're ready, we will pop them right, probably onto a work session, and then onto an agenda to approve whatever they have proposed, so...
Well, Madam Chair, nothing succeeds like a deadline, and nothing, and work exceeds to expand to fill the available time. Mr. Sharp patiently has been waiting for me to turn something around, as have others?
Yes.
Who are smiling patiently. Could we put this on next week's? And that will give me the ability, the incentive, if you will, to gin this up? Okay.
All right.
I, I, I will, I will now get off the done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next is the Superintendent's Report, and then we all have our student representative and our School Board members have their comments.
Just a couple of quick comments tonight. First of all, Phantom of the Opera was absolutely fabulous. I hope a lot of you were able to go, but, and I, and I just have to say, it wasn't even just the students on the stage, but the set, everything. The music was just unbelievable. And I think sometimes we take it for granted what wonderful programs we have, because that was not an easy production to pull off. And it was just, it was like being at a professional production. So, wonderful, wonderful job. Also, this week, we are celebrating, I say celebrating, we're participating in the Hour of Code, and that is all the way from kindergarten through high school. Lots of participation at TJ. They're having an Hour of Code night on Wednesday night and also on Thursday, but they had so many students sign up that they had to cut it off, because you can only have so many students in the biggest space that you have, which was cafeteria. And so, they're going to come back and do it actually again in January, just to allow even more students to participate. But again, that's at all of our buildings. We did have our Fall Sports Awards where last night, and that's always great to see. And one of my favorite parts when I'm there is usually seeing the student-scholar athletes. And again, we kind of take it for granted, not only great athletes and great, great kiddos, but really respecting the academic side as well. So, that was great to see. And we do have our high school band concert this, this week coming up, and then all of our middle school band concerts. So, and middle school ones are usually fairly short. High school is very, very long. So, if you want to come and participate in the middle school, get there on time, because it doesn't last long. High school will go for over two hours, so you can even catch the beginning or the end. So, hope to see you at some of those.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Zach, shall we start with you? Do you have comments this evening?
All right. We finally got the student reps sorted out, and we'll have those, I think we had the one on the Special Education Committee last night go, and the BIE Committee. So, we've already had two go, and that's kind of exciting for me and for, I hope, all of you. And, and so, we're going to start meetings as well, public meetings during school for students to input, like, input their opinions and other things, to try to, on another level, integrate students into the process. And so, we'll have those meetings with me and other student representatives, and have them be issue-specific, so students are more inclined to come and share their thoughts, as a recommendation from Mr. Sharp and Pete Davis. And so, that's awesome. And I also, at some point, would like to go through some of the policies and bylaws of the Committees to amend for, for student representative, because they're kind of inconsistent. So, hopefully, at some point, we can get those onto the, we can amend those bylaws and those policies to, to clarify and to create one standard system for putting those students on the Committees. And, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks very much. Yeah, we do need to clarify and make that consistent in policy, which have members, and I'd like to see a little thing about how they're selected and as well, what their voting rights are or are not. So, that would be great. Ms. Ward, do you have comments for us this evening?
I have not been able to attend many of the, of the Athletic Boosters meetings, because as you probably all know, I have been taking a class on Mondays, that, but I'm happy to report, as of next week, I will be finished, and I'll be able to give you more consistent liaison reports at that time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Encomer, do you have comments this evening?
My story's, my story's just almost similar to, to my colleagues to my left, but there was a Chamber Board meeting today, which I missed, but I was able to glean some of what went on there. There was a change of, I guess, management. They voted some new, the new Board in, so that happened today. Also, today was the grand opening of the Good Fortune, the Eden Center. Obviously, we're here and they're there, so I hope they're having a good time. So, that was, that's what I'm aware of at the Chamber. I'm not aware of a meeting of the George Mason High School, PTA since the referendum, I guess we're, but we should be getting together with Rick and a couple of the other guys. I hope to meet Gabby Sanders over the weekend to discuss the way forward for next year, the program for next year. And that's what I have for now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castillo, have you comments this evening?
Yes, thank you. I believe the twelfth is the Falls Church Education Foundation Holiday Event. Is that, is that, okay. So, that's, that's in the pipeline. The Cable TV Advisory Committee is tomorrow. ESOL has been postponed until January, so it's been quiet on the Committee front. I, so I think that's the extent of my comments right now.
Thanks so much. Mr. Sharp, I'm going to start with you on this side and then come toward me.
Yes, thank you. At the PSBA, a very interesting presentation by the Arlington Superintendent and one of the School Board members there on how they do their Committees, Advisory Committees. Very interesting to hear Tony talk about the STEAM Committee and the other, they noted that there was a school improvement committee that they attended together, and 450 people showed up for the school improvement process. Now, in a comparative sense, the forty-five that showed up at the STEAM Committee is even there, because Arlington's fifteen times. But anyway, their approach to Committees seem to be a bit different than our approach in that they have staff members who are present for the Committees, but staff are not voting members. That was my understanding. They have had a very thoroughgoing set of Committees, looking at a whole variety of different problems and school approvals and strategic planning process. And they, they've gotten a great many people involved, and I think they work at it very hard. The School Board member who was there was one who was leading that kind of process from the, from the parent community angle before she got on to the School Board, and was very, very enthusiastic about drawing the community in, meeting people who are typically underrepresented, party communities, language communities. It was really, really very, very interesting presentation. I'll just, some of that will be going through the Committee. I did want to mention there's a regional breakfast for legislative members that I think are vulnerable, may not be able to attend because of school obligations that they, and to tend to take what package we have, draft at that point, resolution, maybe in the draft, whatever information we have. That's typical for that time period, is that some of the Boards, just that what they're discussing and not what's finalized. I know the sixteen Arlington organizers that is for Arlington, Alexandria, and Falls Church, or it's the delegates and Senate members have representation in any of those jurisdictions. Tony, thank you very much for organizing schools tour. Sorry, so I'll be able to take part in half of that. I think we enjoyed the look at the area with the robotics preparations that are going on. Just by the way, this Saturday, there's going to be an all-day project here. John Lulu will be leading his students through preparations for the robotics competitions, competitions for spring that have robots ready to go. John also mentioned that he had just completed the work on the Phantom, and that he felt, as was mentioned, that the staging was particularly outstanding this year. It's been a number of years that he's been doing this, to have him pick out this year's outstanding group was doing that very comfortably. There was also unusual kind of... in a great conference. There was also unusual comment I thought from the IP art teacher group. I didn't particularly associate this problem with IP art in the past, but he said, you know, we have a great problem because the schedule is so compressed, and we have to develop a, each student has to develop a portfolio with a minimum number of projects in the portfolio. And because there's only, you know, from the time period after Labor Day until roughly April, or March, or April the tenth, that there's, there's really a difficult squeeze of time in there for the completion of those projects. So getting permission to set our own calendar with more, more flexibility, or even to that type of activity. I attended a meeting of the Alliance for Youth most recently. That's a, a group of both school staff and city staff who are engaged in services to the youth, from court services to human service, our counseling, social workers. And I just wanted to say, I found that they are doing terrific, terrific work. I think they're genuinely saving lives for our community. Have been a number of very unfortunate incidents in our, in our area recently that have taken their own lives, and there have been concerns raised at any number of official levels, including supervisors at Fairfax. I just congratulate the proactive stance that our, our staff is taking, collaborative work that they're doing. I really do think it's, and, and we may not see it in that context, and I'll say thank goodness that we don't.
Yep.
The joint meeting we had with city council was also very, very important. A very strong consensus among the council, where they want to go, what they, they think the constraints are. It's the daunting task, it's a very different opinion, where I think the city's capability is for affording what we, what we could be able to do. But at the same time, it's almost like, you know, plucking a really strong min, in some extent, to find a way to, to get our message across in a way that helps to bring, to bring everyone to a stronger understanding of what, what our capabilities are, what our needs are. I think, I think they're very well committed to serving the community mostly, but it's just the, there is a big gap in the understanding of the place. Last season, the BIE unfortunately met during the time we were at the PSBA, and they met at Mount Danial. And I did ask to just fade my phone, and they were going to meet in the, in the all-purpose room in Mount Danial. Of course, the crew sticks in there terribly fast, so there was really no way to do a teleconference into that facility. But I did get a follow-up from Perry Duff, and they continued to do great work. And you'll see it almost every day in the announcements, where a whole variety of professionals are coming into the schools, providing their perspective and supplementing what our, what our teachers are teaching, and making it, making it a real-world experience for the kids. That's, that's, I think that's, hats off to Perry Duff Conley and Tori McKinney and the others that are making that most. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to also kind of talk a little bit about the parks. On Saturday, they are going to be having a setting parks priority, updating the parks, open space, recreation chapter of the comprehensive plan at the community center, starting at ten o'clock on Saturday. And so public forum for folks to give opinions and comments on that, on how to update that. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us to talk a little bit more about possibility of adding rectangular playing surface, potentially even talking a little bit about uses for the high school and fields there as well. Also, with a couple of the other groups that I am the liaison to, I have been unable to make those meetings, because over the last about two weeks or so, I've been out on the busy part of my day job, doing some recruiting out of the area. But that's starting to wind down, to be in the office a little bit more, reading applications now. So I will be back on, on task for that again.
Great. Thanks so very much.
Just a couple of quick things. Mostly spending time on Mount Daniel with both the ASAC and with our Fairfax neighbors. So that's continuing. And I will not be at either all or most of next week's meeting because of the seventh grade band concert, which I'm sure you all would die to go to, but you're going to be at the school board. So I will let you know how it is. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Just a couple of things. First, in the Washington Post this week, there was a story about Arlington County and how many students they have and the difficulties they're having with facilities. So I say that by way of saying it's not just us. There are challenges all around us as well, as we have more families coming to Northern Virginia and more students in our schools. I did think it was interesting, though, to hear they're looking at alternatives for finding thirteen hundred seats for middle school students, either through renovation or new building, and are constrained by a budget of only a hundred and twenty-six million dollars for that. So I thought that was kind of interesting. The second thing, for the public's knowledge, earlier this evening, we did have a work session where the board discussed the guidance it would be giving to the superintendent as she prepares the operating budget recommendations that she'll bring to us on the thirteenth of January. The board asked her to do a couple of things. First, we asked her to bring to us a realistic request of, that would show what she, as a professional, an education expert, says what needs to be done to maintain and enhance our schools. And we do that because we think it's important for this board, and for our staff, and for the community to understand what it takes to operate a, a great school division. And then the school board will make decisions from that recommendation. We also asked that when she, as she does that, she keep in mind the set of priorities the school board has adopted for the next three years. And finally, that she be prepared to show us some alternatives from her requests that would help us understand the dynamics of the, of that request. And so I'm sure she and Mr. Campbell will get to work. And they have been working already, but we'll get to work on that. But I just wanted the community to understand why we ask, why we give that guidance. We think it's important that everybody understand what's really required, and then the school board will make the tough decisions at the end of the day. There is a steering committee meeting on the George Mason, Marilyn Henderson, Thursday morning, seven thirty a.m., downstairs in the Dogwood Room, and everyone is welcome. It's a public meeting. And on the agenda for that meeting is kind of a regroup after the ULI TAP session to talk about how we move forward and what the next steps are, and specifically to review a draft of an RFP we'd like to put out to find a, a partner to help us through the planning process, to make sure that we're doing the right things in the right way, in the right order, at the right time, to keep the project moving as quickly as possible without any missteps or oversights. And so that'll be Thursday morning. The board does have a work session next Tuesday evening at central office at seven o'clock, where we'll be talking about the CIP, and we'll be talking about a couple of other issues as well. That is also public. And that will be our last school board meeting for this calendar year, unless something comes up or we have to have an emergency, you know, meeting or session of some sort. So after that meeting, we'll be meeting next on the thirteenth of January. And a lot will happen at that meeting. In addition to the budget the superintendent will present, this board will need to organize for the new calendar year at that meeting. And what that means is certifying the days we're going to meet, and the times we're going to meet, and the places we're going to meet. It also means electing leadership, a chair and a vice chair to manage the work of the board over the next year. And then there are some other stuff, too. I did, at this point, want to make clear to my colleagues that it is not my intent to continue in a leadership role with the board. And so I encourage you all to think about whether you would like to have a leadership role on the board as we go through this next month. I'm surely happy to talk to people and give them my perspective about that job and how it works, and how much time it takes and what it is, but I won't be doing it. Again, I'm welcoming an opportunity for someone else to step up and, and do it for us. I think there are a lot of smart people sitting on this dais. And that's it for my comments. We have only left on this agenda the approval of minutes of November eleven, twenty fourteen. Excuse me, my throat's gone dry. Unless there is an objection by anybody here on the school board, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to approve those. Turning to objections, so ordered, we approve those minutes. Unless there's anything else, we will adjourn for the evening. All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much. And everybody have a happy holiday. And I get out of this short term.